Dear Lord, thank you for our student athletes who are here tonight. Appreciate your efforts very much and blessing them to get through their seasons and doing well. I also thank you for the Board of Ed, my eight colleagues on the Board as we get to go through budget deliberations and other things. Please grant us the wisdom to make the right choices, the strength of conviction, and the ability to reach out to those who we may disagree with. And also, thank you, Lord, for not listening to people who've been praying for snow. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. In event of a fire and emergency, our evacuations are through the rear of the chamber, out the door, or out the door to my left, and out to the parking lot. Kathy, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grady, Mrs. LeBlanc, Mr. Neville.
Here.
Mrs. Thurston, Mr. Genitis, Mr. Peabody.
Present.
Mrs. Ungeyer.
Here.
Mr. Warer, Chairman Serrard.
I am here. Now, we have Board guests. Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are going to recognize our boys and girls, JFK student athletes, for their 2014-15 undefeated basketball seasons. We welcome House Master, Mr. Connell Clark, along with the coaches and the student athletes who are here with their families. And, Mr. Chairman, at your place, you have certificates for them. As the coaches read off their names in a few moments, the Board can come around, hand out those certificates, and we'll take a picture of all the teams with you.
Very good. So, I guess, you're standing in front.
Good evening again. My name is Connell Clark. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at JFK Middle School. And this was a special winter for our basketball programs, as both the boys and girls finished with an undefeated season, with a record of 10 wins and zero losses. Even more impressive, though, was how our student athletes performed in the classroom. The average GPA for the girls' basketball program was a 10.21, which is equivalent to an A-minus average. And the boys' average GPA was a 9.07, which is equivalent to a B-plus average. So, at this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to the girls' coach and guidance counselor at JFK Middle School, Mrs. Kim Nadeau.
All right. So, I'm going to start off with Jessica Marcot. She's one of our sixth graders on the team. Come on up. Another sixth grader on our team is Morgan Ludwig. She is not here today, or tonight. Seventh grader Holly Jutress. Another seventh grader, she's currently not here, Kaitlyn Blethyn. Madison Daly. Eighth grader Cassie Urso. Another Samantha, Samantha Ferrato. Tori Gigalone, she's not here tonight. And to finish us off, Jasmine Copaz.
Can I come by and take a picture?
Oh, where do I go? Over here? Right in. Is that, yeah, you might want to...
Right over here.
Right over there. Oh, wait on the mark.
Right in front of us.
Kim, I'm going to take your seat.
Okay. You guys can squeeze in just a little bit. That would help us. That includes everybody. Okay, ready? Here we go. Woo! Great. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations.
Good job. Go ahead. I'm like, oh, my God. I don't know. Okay, now up for the boys' team, Jaden Archer. Alex Kravitz. Kyle Menaker. Matt O'Connell, who is not here tonight. Christian Passini. Kevin Wilson, who is not here. Vinnie Delano and Devon Edwards, who are not here, along with Owen Lawler. Next up is Brandon Smith. Cameron Hicks, who is not here tonight. Dylan Hurlbert. And our manager, who we're so happy to have from Fermi, Karina Filippa. I should have asked you.
All tall guys going for a... Stay right down the first level. Right across. Straight across.
Can you come on this side with me?
Break. Excuse me, folks. Okay. Ready? Perfect. Good job. Nice job, guys. Good work, guys.
Congratulations to everyone. Job well done, you guys. You guys are amazing. No, thanks for...
Thank you, guys.
You guys do us proud. Bye, everyone.
Basketball soon. The next big...
Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Schuman, the Enfield legislators are not with us tonight.
That is correct. They have rescheduled for April. They were called into a special session today, so they were not available.
So, the next time they were available and they're available is after the budget, correct?
April 10th meeting?
April 14th meeting.
Well, we have the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Schuman, you still have the floor.
We have one of our student representatives here, so it's going to be easy for you to pick where to start.
Go ahead.
Over the past week, the Enfield Fermi East Grammy Stafford Hockey Team won the CCC South Conference Championship. Also, this past weekend, Buzz Robotics went to Springfield for the first competition of the season. They finished in fourth place. The next competition is Saturday, March 28th, and Sunday, March 29th in Hartford. Also upcoming, the Invention Convention will be in the Fermi Gym and Auditorium from 8:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, March 21st. The Invention Convention is a chance for students from the middle school to demonstrate their creativity by creating inventions that are judged.
Very good. Thank you so much.
In addition, there are three important dates coming up in the next week. Tomorrow night, the Board will be meeting with the Town Council, beginning at 7:00. On Thursday night, the Board is going to be presenting your proposed budget to the Town Council at 6:30. And on next Monday night, the Town Manager is presenting his budget proposal to the Town Council at 7:00. So, those are three important meetings coming forward. I know we'll be at two of them, and certainly, the Town Manager's meeting will be televised and open to the public if you want to come and attend.
Mr. Neville.
Just a point of information. Dr. Schuman, both those meetings, tomorrow's and Thursday's, going to be on the ETV, or at least recorded. I know they don't do it directly. I know one is, because I saw the note there, but is tomorrow night's...
The 12th will be... I don't know about tomorrow night. Tomorrow night is the Town Council meeting with the Board on security, so I don't know whether the Town Manager has asked them to come. I don't know whether that meeting is... How much of that they intend to conduct an executive session, which would eliminate the ETV from being present. So, I'm not sure about tomorrow night. They will be there for Thursday night.
I know they list tomorrow night as the public is welcome, so I'm guessing that if that's the case... Could you possibly just check and just see if they intended to...
We'll check.
I think, you know, in the spirit of keeping everything transparent, it would be good to do that, I think. Thank you.
Is that it, Doctor?
That's it.
All right. Moving on to audiences. Shannon Grant. It's all good. Come on up. It's got quiet in here.
It's amazing.
As always, name and address, and then you can...
Sure. Shannon Grant, 49 Yale Drive, Enfield. Thank you. Glad to be here again. It's been a long time since I've been in front of the Board, but I'm glad to be here tonight. The reason that I'm here today is to talk about the budget, specifically, the seventh grade team that was cut last year. On June 17th, the Board understandably cut a team from the seventh grade JFK school. My daughter is in seventh grade this year, and although the numbers that were reflected at the meeting, 23 students, perhaps that is correct with respect to the typical level. It's not correct with respect to the honors level. And I'm here to ask that you reconsider putting another team, or go to a Block 4-4 schedule for JFK to allow for eight periods during the day. My daughter's been in the honors science and math this year, and she has approximately 30 kids in both of her classes. She was asked to write a letter to her science teacher explaining why she wants to remain in the honors program. Come to find out, it's because with the amount of kids in the honors program, they cannot safely host the science in the labs. So, this is detrimentally affecting our students. I think we should be pushing our kids, not telling the high-achieving students that they can't take the high-achieving classes. I think we should be pushing more and saying, "I know you can do it. We have the resources to get you there, and we will see you this through." Not, "Okay, you could do it, but we're going to put you in a general-level class." I just don't think it's fair for our kids. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Maurice LaRosa.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. LaRosa.
Maurice LaRosa, 37, Litchfield Drive, Enfield. Been a long time since I've showed up at a Board of Ed meeting. Some of you that have known me for a while know that that's not necessarily a good thing. I enjoy sitting at home and watching the meetings in the comfort of my own living room, but for me to come out and have to come to speak at a Board of Ed meeting, that means there's a problem. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the safety of some of our students. And I'm not talking about guards. That's a topic that is a little bit passionate to me, but I'll save that for another night. I'm talking about busing for our students. We're not supposed to bring personalities into this, so I will do my best to keep them out. The Superintendent's Office has been made aware of a problem with winter buses several times from many parents around town, I believe, but I don't see any action being taken. So, I figure the next step is to come to you guys. I live in an area where, if you measure from JFK to my house, following the roads with no sidewalks, the measurement is 1.18 miles. If you measure following the sidewalks, it's 1.55 miles. I believe the Board of Ed, the Town of Enfield, follows the 1.5 miles for busing. I'm currently looking into what the state statute says, whether or not that's sidewalked roads or unsidewalked roads. We do provide buses for people that live up Raffia Road, and that we were told that that would stop, and I don't want that to stop, because even up Raffia Road, there could be an issue in the wintertime. And you look at the winters we've had the past two, three years, and we still have snowbanks that are piled up three, four feet high. I have a daughter who's in seventh grade at JFK. She's maybe four foot tall. Right now, we could say, "Oh, winter's over. It's not really a concern." But what you have right now is during the day, you have a lot of melting going on. At night, you have a lot of freezing. These kids are going to walk to school tomorrow morning, slide on the ice. Some of these roads, the end of my road, my driveway, is eight feet longer right now than it typically is through the year, because the snow just narrows the roads. But not only are we narrowing the roads, we're expecting cars to travel down the road with our children. We have buses that drive right by my neighborhood. By the way, my daughter's not the only one in our neighborhood. We have almost a dozen kids from JFK that live in our neighborhood. The bus drives right by to drop off kids at the very next street on Steel Road. But our kids don't get buses because they fall just a little bit short, but because we're measuring on unsidewalked roads. Why would we do that? Aren't we... I mean, we're looking at armed guards. We're looking at ways of keeping our kids safe, yet we're putting them out there on the roads in the wintertime that are not safe. I grew up in East Hartford when I was in the sixth grade, okay? I had a friend named Philip, and it wasn't wintertime, so it may not go along with it, but it was a Monday morning, and it was trash pickup. And we didn't have tipper barrels like we have today. And my friend Philip, who played football with me, was riding his bicycle down the sidewalk one morning. His pedal caught a trash bag, and he rolled into the road, and he's dead. What could happen to a child tomorrow morning? Going down Guild Street as they walk by the snowbank and slip on the ice from the melting today and slide underneath the front wheels of a car traveling 25 to 30 miles an hour? Your job is to keep our children safe. I'm asking that you implement the snow bus immediately. I don't believe there's any extra cost to it. They're driving right by the street anyway. I don't think any parent's asking for door-to-door service. My child doesn't need to get dropped off right at my driveway. But if the bus is driving by the road, doesn't it make sense to keep them safe and drop them at the end of the road? We already do it for some parts of town. What makes that part of town any different from any other part of town? Why are we keeping some kids safer than others? So, again, I ask you to look into it, and if there's possibility of immediately implementing it to keep our children safe and keep some of them alive, why don't we do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRosa. Board Member comments. Mr. Peabody.
First of all, thank you, Mrs. Grant and Mo, for your comments. We'll follow up. Congratulations to the Enfield Fermi Hockey Team for their victory over the weekend. I did get to finally attend an Enfield Girls' Basketball game and saw them do a number on Prince Tech. And by the way, we wish them well. They're playing tonight in Waterbury, I believe. So, I don't have much for comments tonight. A couple shout-outs I would like to give, though. Joe Benes is a 2007 graduate of Fermi High School. He's... Peter, you'd appreciate this comment. He's working in the region as a heavy-duty engine mechanic on diesel equipment. Very happy, very productive, great kid. Mom and dad did a great job, polite, wonderful guy, happy in what he's doing. But then, the lady sitting to my left has a nephew in Los Angeles named Bryce. And Bryce is a 2008 graduate of Enrico Fermi High, and he's working in the art industry. Went out there, nailed a job interview, and is being productive in a multi-billion-dollar segment. He has a buddy with him. Went out for a vacation. Goes and meets up with an artist in a gallery in t-shirts and jeans. Got the offer before he left. He's a 2008 graduate of Fermi. You'd appreciate the t-shirts and jeans, Tim, because it's my kid that pulled that one off. But he also got six other offers out there. So, this kid... My point is, not just to give shout-out, to give shout-outs, but oftentimes, children don't understand and are not supported in going after their goals and their dreams. And these three young men achieve that, and I think that's important to recognize in public. Well-done teachers, and well-done kids and parents.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Ms. Ungeyer.
I'd like to congratulate the first readers on their great accomplishment last night. I attended that awards ceremony. Really enjoyed that. And I'd like to thank the community who attended the open forum and with the discussion with regard to the guards and all the emails that people have sent in. And I'd like to congratulate the hockey team. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ungeyer. Mr. Neville.
I had the... First of all, just congratulations to the students. Certainly, I spent a lot of my career there. It's always good to see them excel as they generally do. So, congrats to their accomplishment. Secondly, I had the pleasure of going to the Kite Meeting last Wednesday, and besides the issues that were brought up there, the folks asked me a couple of questions, and one in particular about the budget and what was the status on the budget. I shared with them the 11-page document, a 12-page document that Dr. Schuman had presented to us, I think on February 17th, if I'm not mistaken. And I told them that I would share it with them, but one of the questions that came up, I distributed a couple of copies that I had, but the codes that were used for the areas. I know A stood for athletics, and C stood for non-certified, S for specialist, and stuff like that, but it wasn't clarified there. I know that Kathy had clarified it in the minutes, and I was wondering if you could get that as a preamble on that, on the 11-page document, just so that they understand what that means. I think some people looked at it alphabetically, that those were the cuts that you were talking about, and that that would be misrepresentative of what you were talking about. So, I was wondering if you could add that with, you know, the Chair's permission to that document, so when people call you, as I've been directing them to call you to get copies of that, that they would have that code and the explanation. I think the explanation you gave Kathy in the minutes was perfect. You just put that on as a header on there. I think that would take care of it. The second thing that came up, and I know this has been going on for discussions with all of us, you know, back and forth on our emails, is the security issue in terms of having parents be fingerprinted and to come in and work with students for the various jobs that they would have and responsibilities that they would have. And I think there's still a lot of questions about that. We brought it up a number of times, and I know that it's gone to Mr. Warer for the Policy Committee. And I spoke to Mr. Dreszek, that we were talking about ways to address that. I think it needs to be addressed, and I know there's considerable interest on the Board's part, so I'd like to see us if we could expedite that as quickly as possible so that we can get that one resolved. It's... There's a lot of concern within the community about it. And one other thing that I was going to bring up... I'll bring it up afterwards, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. Thurston.
I just want to congratulate the first readers, along with Ms. Ungeyer. I attended last night, and the kids were so proud, and I have to give a little shout-out to my friend Olivia Hosek, who got her certificate, and so, very proud of Olivia. And like Mr. Neville said, I did receive a call regarding the fingerprints, and they're just... I think they're concerned, the place where I received a phone call, very volunteer is very big to keep this program going, and that was one of their concerns, especially when we had Read Across America. Somebody wanted to come in and volunteer just to read a book, but then was turned away because the person wasn't fingerprinted. And they're just... They're getting concerned, because the volunteering is such a huge impact for this program. So, I know that's definitely something, you know, we want to get on top of and see what we can correct.
I may just... My aging brain cells are finally clicking in here right now. I know it did. It really did. But I'm older than you, so I... I wanted to bring up, and I've brought this up several times, it's not to create a problem, but the Fermi Committee, the Fermi Use Committee, you know, we've asked several times along the way to get some kind of summary on that, and my recollection was they were supposed to come before us and do that. I've got several calls about that. I have my own concerns, which, you know, I've shared with the Chair. If we could get something down here for the next meeting, I just think it's gone a long time, and I just think it's time to, just to bring some closure to it and see where we are. Thank you.
Mr. Genitis. Oh, Ms. Thurston, were you done?
I'm all set.
All right. Thank you.
Well, your memory got one of the other ones that I was going to do. There's two things I agree with you on tonight.
Let's go for three.
Hey, last meeting, we went overboard. First, addressing Mrs. Grant, though. Having taught school for so long at the middle school and the junior high school level, what typically happens with sixth grade going into seventh grade, a lot... The honors classes are always very, very large. They always have been. And then, from when you go from seventh grade to eighth grade, I'm going to say you probably cut eight, nine, sometimes 10 kids from the group. And sometimes, it's a hard choice. Sometimes, it's not. But it's, you know, you have that one year in seventh grade where some kids have ability but don't use it, or they just might be in over their head a little bit, or whatever. But you start to see a differentiation within the group itself. You really do. So, that's typically what happens in seventh going to eighth grade in most subjects, too, right across the board. I always used to have over 30 kids, and then I'd always have 23, 24 the following year. So, what your individual case is, I don't know, but if it falls in there, that's one of the reasons. And Mo, as far as... I thought we still had the mile rule. It's not? Is it a mile and a half now?
Yeah.
Oh, I remember... I didn't realize we upped it, because I ran into the same situation where I lived, the sidewalk versus the crow flying. But it would seem easy enough if kids are really close there. Maybe if there's room on the bus, they could walk back to the next bus stop if we could pick them up. I mean, that's a no-brainer, really. So, if you're 10 houses away, 15 houses away, and you've got a mile, over a mile to walk versus walking back a few hundred yards, and there's room on the bus, I would say, during the wintertime, make that accommodation if we can do that. That would be an easy solution, I think. Okay, some of the other things. I think another... The ones that were brought up, the Fermi Use Committee, we've got to get an answer. This thing has been dragging on way, way too long, and it's only giving fuel to fire for conspiracy people, or who's made up their mind, or the building just being let go on purpose, or whatever. But this has gone on way, way too long. As far as the volunteer thing is going, I remember speaking against it when we first brought it up. I think it's got to stop. I don't know about looking into it. People getting into schools, former teachers not being allowed to come back into schools, volunteers. It's... This isn't 1984 and George Orwell. I think we've really gone way overboard on this school volunteer and getting fingerprints and stuff like that. And I would love to see the Board entertaining just stopping the darn thing.
George Orwell's The Utopia book, 1984.
What did I say?
No, no, you're right. Stacy never read the book. It wasn't required.
Annie's out, too, now. I think another thing that we have to look at are these elementary report cards, kindergarten, first and second grade. I mean, those things, if you look at those things and how long they are... versus walking back a few hundred yards, and there's room on the bus, I would say during the wintertime, make that accommodation if we can do that. That would be an easy solution, I think. Okay, some of the other things. I think another, the ones that were brought up, the Fermi Use Committee, we've got to get an answer. This thing has been dragging on way, way too long, and it's only giving fuel to fire for conspiracy people or who's made up their mind or the building just being let go on purpose or whatever, but this has gone on way, way too long. As far as the volunteer thing going, I remember speaking against it when we first brought it up. I think it's got to stop. I don't know about looking into it. People getting into schools, former teachers not being allowed to come back into schools, volunteers, it's, this isn't 1984 and George Orwell. I think we've really gone way overboard on this school volunteer and getting fingerprints and stuff like that, and I would love to see the board entertain just stopping the darn thing.
George Orwell's Utopia book, 1984.
What did I say?
No, no, you're right. Stacy never read the book. It wasn't required.
Annie's out, too, now. Okay. I think another thing that we have to look at are these elementary report cards, kindergarten, first and second grade. I mean, those things, if you look at those things and how long they are, it's, to me, it almost looks like more of a guide that a teacher should have before them when parents come in for a parent-teacher conference, and you're going down and you're looking at them and checking it, stuff like that. But to take those report cards and definitively say, "My kid has mastered this or hasn't mastered that in a short third of the year," I don't know how you do it. I remember the days when we had 106 math objectives. It was a joke, and I really think this report card could be more used as a guide to parent conferences as opposed to being this specific. Because what it does, it opens up the door. Anytime your kid is a little below average or something, there's the big discussion, what are you going to do? Next thing you know, you've got 10 or 15 things that you've got to bring the kid up to. I mean, there's just, I think it's something we have to look at again. It's way, way too cumbersome.
Mr. Neville.
It's timely that you bring it up, Peter. We, you know, the people in the curriculum committee know that we've been talking about this for several meetings, and we charged Michelle to get some, talk to the principals and talk to the parents about this, and I think they set up a couple of focus groups, and they're going to meet with us and report, have a discussion with the committee on March 23rd, which is the date of our next meeting. And you're welcome to come, and I think it might be, it should be a good discussion.
How about teachers?
I think.
I'd get classroom teachers in there, too.
I think they were part of the focus group. All I know is that we're going to have groups that they've been talking to coming in and discussing the concerns, because I know the concerns come from both teachers and from parents, okay? And so we asked her to do this, and I think she worked with the principals to get this done and is going to report back to us on the 23rd.
Okay, so you will be doing it at the next meeting?
Five o'clock on the 23rd.
Have a nice day. A question, I don't know if it falls on the doctor's shoulders or Tom's shoulders, but these trips where we're taking kids out of the school for their own safety down to CCMC, are we getting stiffed for ambulance bills? We don't.
That would be through me to the chair, or through the chair to Dr. Schuman, would be the question.
No, we don't pay the bill.
Okay. Boss for that cab ride down there now. And then the last thing, and I'm just asking you if you would do this out of courtesy, Dr. Schuman, could you please once again explain for the benefit of people who watch this on TV, and then a lot of them go to Facebook? I'm sick of listening to the board being ripped because we don't do this, we don't do that, and we don't say this, we don't say that. But when something involves school personnel, board members cannot be informed in any detail why the investigation is going on. Why is that so?
In most cases, under the collective bargaining agreement that the board has with its employees, the process or part of the due process that the employee is afforded if they feel that there is something injustice done to them through the grievance process, they usually come through, starts with the administration, and then if they're not satisfied with what the administration hands out for a decision, the board is the next level in the appellate process. If the board is involved during the first several levels, it would have to excuse itself, and then the next level for jurisdiction over that issue would have to go to an outside arbitration panel. So the board is not involved at the very beginning, and if it does rise to the level of the administration can't resolve it with the bargaining unit, then the board is brought in to resolve it, because ultimately, the agreement is with the board and the bargaining unit, not the administration and the bargaining unit, but we administer the contract up until the point where the bargaining unit feels that we haven't done it properly, and they want to come before you, who negotiated it with them, to get a resolution to their problems. So that's why you're left out, because at the ultimate end, you will have the final say.
Thank you very much. So for those people listening, it's not that we don't care, we just have to be left out of the process to a certain point before we do get involved. So please, stop with the, "You guys don't care, you're not doing this, why don't you do this, why don't you do that?" So now you know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. Congratulations to our hockey team. Congratulations to all our student athletes that were here before us today. They do make us look very good. We'll be looking into what we can do to amend the bus schedule. I understand a safety concern. I will look into it. I do know the board generally has a policy of no variance from our busing policy, because it, the reason that that evolved was because there was more of a political process in the past, and a lot of kids that were relatively close to schools were getting buses, and a lot of kids, it just made a mess of things. And that's why we went to a strict interpretation. There's always room for tweaking. We'll take a look at it. As far as the fingerprinting is concerned, it has been brought to the Policy Committee, and I'm in favor of some kind of level of background check. We're talking our kids, and we're liable for them. My, what I would like to see, and because I believe this is what our current policy is, is that if you are not fingerprinted, you can be with a fingerprinted person as long as you're escorted, and as long as you are not alone with that person for any length of time. If you're not alone with a student for any length of time, and you do not have a fingerprint, and you are being escorted with someone who has a fingerprint, you can do your service. I believe that's what our policy is now. So when you say that, you know, somebody's being turned away at the door, you can be escorted. I mean, even when I was in the service and on a nuclear-powered submarine, we, you could be escorted onboard in certain areas of that ship. I think it works in our school system the way it is now. I think you need to be fingerprinted. I would like to see it not as every year, perhaps every time you switch a building, but you should be.
Point of information to the chair. This is a, I mean, I think the request was to have the discussion with the policy, which I assume will bring us a revised policy or policy for discussion. Maybe we could have that whole discussion at that time, maybe better place, just as a.
Just, point of information for the chair. You get the same background check with or without fingerprints. Been doing it for years on different clients, just want you to know that, so fingerprints is irrelevant in a background check.
I'm, the way I'm looking at it is if you're required to be fingerprinted for a NICS check, and that's to identify your person, then so be it. I'm not going to argue that point, and I, but I'm just one voice. Do I think that it needs to be done every year? Probably not. I'm one of those individuals that has a pistol permit, and I get it done every five years. So I think if I'm, to exercise my constitutional right, I have to get verified every five years, I think getting verified every three years is not a big deal. But yes, you can be escorted according to our current policy. As long as you are not, again, I'm going to reiterate this, as long as there is no chance that you will be alone with a child for any length of time, you can be escorted into the building. So if somebody wants to show up to read a story and they're cleared, they can do that because they're not going to be alone with a child for any length of period of time, as long as they are supervised by someone who has a background check. I think that's pretty simple, until we get through this mess. As far as former schools coming, former teachers walking into the school, I'm one of those guys that thinks you need to have a purpose to be in the building in order to be in the building. You can't just walk through and say, "Hi, I'm here to visit." And if you're going to do that, you'd be announced, and I'm sure we can make accommodations for you. It's a school building. The Fermi Committee, which I was going to bring up in committee reports, but since we're doing it here, the thing that has been holding up the Fermi Committee has been information. I finally got that last piece of information. We'll be having a meeting, hopefully, before the next Board of Ed meeting. Problem is, is that as time wore on, we ran into budget season, and budget season kind of absorbs all of our meetings. And I'm also one of those guys that doesn't like to have a meeting if there's nothing to talk about. So shoot me. Other than that?
It was retarded.
Yeah. A future reference, March 21st at Fermi is going to be the Enfield Invention Convention. I think it's an awesome event. It, I believe, runs from 9:00 to 1:00, so if you can make it, come on out. Our kids do our best there, and it's a really, really good thing. So.
I'm judging.
I'm going to see if I can judge, too, because they sent me an invite, and I'm going to try, so. All right, moving on. Unfinished business, do we have any? No. New business, do we have any? No. Board committee reports. Building Committee.
We had a brief meeting about a week or so ago, and I, one of the things, I think they, Art got ahold of you, that they want to come before the board again, and it was originally going to be this meeting, but it's going to be next meeting. Is that correct? So they can give us a, they need something from us, I think, or from you or the chair, but I think they can also give us a quick update. Things are going on as scheduled. I'll send you out a kind of a list of the monthly activities, okay? And they've actually been sticking to them pretty well. Obviously, they've had issues with the weather, as any construction group is having, but they seem to be managing along with it. So I will send you out the schedule. If you have any questions, give me a call, but I think you'll get a better update as to the status at the next meeting. Thank you.
And we already discussed curriculum, correct?
Yep.
Very good. Approval of the minutes, special minute, special meeting minutes A, February 17th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any comments, corrections? Show of hands, approve the minutes? So be it. Special meeting minutes B, February 17th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Ungeyer. Any comments, corrections? None. Show of hands, approve those minutes? So be it. Regular meeting minutes, February 24th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any comments or corrections? Sensing none. Show of hands, approved? Those are approved. Moving along. Accounts and payroll, there are none. Correspondence and communications, the secretary is out. Audiences, do we have any further audiences? None. Sweet. We have a need for executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two brief items to discuss with you in an executive session.
Very good. So I have a motion for Mr. Neville to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Peabody. Any discussion?
We're allowed to do this before 8:00.
Happens when I run the meetings. The show of hands. We are currently in executive session. We will not be returning to the chambers. Good night, everybody.